We can hear you, but you are echoing. So let's try to troubleshoot a little bit on our end. Terry, could you try again, please? Sacramento, can you say something so we can do an audio check?
We had to fix our audio.
Now it's perfect. No echo.
Okay, great.
Can you hear us okay, Terry?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. All right, let's go ahead and get started, please.
We're good? Okay. Okay, we're ready, President Aguinaldo.
Wonderful. I would like to call the Cal-rite College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning on August 20th at 11:04 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Terry Lucas, the board liaison at Cal-rite College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calrite.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit to me here in Sacramento and to Laura there in SoCal. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q&amp;A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry, and please call the roll.
Love adieu. Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Adrian Brown.
Present.
Lillian Correll. Amy Costa. Ricardo de la Fuente.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Pam Haines.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis.
Present.
Harry Legrand.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Bill Rawlings is here, as is Member Perry.
Thank you.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Here.
Los Villa Lobos. Joseph Williams. We have a quorum, President Aguinaldo.
Very much. Now we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Brown, will you lead us on the pledge, please?
Yes. Ready, begin.
Thank you very much, Trustee Brown. We will now have a discussion on the order of the agenda. My update there is that on item 4.1, staff is removing the recommendation for item B. Does anyone else have any comments on the rest of the agenda? All right, hearing none. Let's move swiftly to my president's report. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here. We have a lot to get through today, and I want to emphasize the importance of today's meeting as we navigate towards the end of Cal-rite's startup period and chart the course for its future. This is a tough time. I won't deny the challenges facing our state and higher education more broadly in today's economic and political environment. And for us as a board, this means finalizing Cal-rite's budget in the midst of a difficult fiscal year while also staying focused on the opportunities ahead. I want to thank everyone, our fellow board members, college leadership, faculty, staff, members of the public, for sharing your perspectives and underscoring the critical moment that we are in. That is the very design of this board, to bring a variety of voices together, to listen with openness, and to guide this institution with accountability and care. Today's agenda reflects both realities, the discipline we need to manage through constraints and the vision we must hold on to as we work to strengthen Cal-rite's unique role in serving adult learners across California. Let me back up a little bit here to set the stage. Per its founding legislation, Cal-rite was given a seven-year startup period in which to fine-tune how best to serve our adult learners. January 2026 is the end of seven years, and it's something the institution has been charting towards since its inception with a large amount of pressure to grow rapidly and to innovate during these seven years, all with flat-lined funding. We are nearing the end of this phase, and as you'll see later on today in Cal-rite's annual milestone report, the college has fulfilled all mandated requirements and continues to drive economic mobility for working-age Californians. The end of the college's startup phase serves as the close of an important chapter in the college's history, but also signifies the beginning of its next phase of innovation. With students in 57 of 58 California counties, Cal-rite is ready to dive deeper into serving the millions of working-age Californians with no college degree. I've had the opportunity to see Cal-rite's model evolve and grow since its inception. The Cal-rite team has developed an institution that serves as a lifeline for adult learners in today's economy, an institution that centers its decisions on students and their specific evolving needs, an institution that puts research and innovation at the forefront of every initiative, and an institution that is paving the way for future, for the future of higher education and workforce development. That is a rarity in this moment. Amidst transitions in governments, evolution in our job market, and the increased costs of education, it's critical that we collectively ensure that working-age adults know that no matter where they came from or what their goals are, they will find a path to success at Cal-rite. As Cal-rite prepares to exit its startup period, this is the moment for establishing the organization and priorities needed to move forward and continue driving student successes to date. As part of my president's report, we also traditionally do a readout of what happened at the Executive Committee meeting, which was last held on June 18th, 2025. The board made the following approvals on certain agreements, contracts, and purchase orders, which I'll read. An agreement with a career catalyst program for a term beginning July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026, with a total not-to-exceed amount of $600,000. An agreement with compete for enrollment marketing and advertising support commencing on July 1, 2025, for a not-to-exceed amount of $495,200K for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. An agreement for a contract increase with HubSpot, a college-wide CRM platform, for $130,482 for fiscal year 2025 and 2026, and the approval of a purchase order for expenditure of $170,115 for fiscal year 2025, 2026, for sales force, students, and staff licenses. There was also a first reading of a new board policy, 3433, which was the prohibition of sex discrimination under Title IX, which will be considered for adoption under today's consent agenda. And as far as constituency reports, Deb Hemingway, the president of the Associated Students Associated Students of Cal-rite College, provided an update. And finally, I'd like to welcome our newest board member, Lillian Correll, to the Cal-rite Board of Trustees. And with that, I will pass it on to President Menon for the CEO report.
Thank you so much. Good morning, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the Cal-rite College Board of Trustees. First, I wanted to begin by thanking you for your flexibility as we shifted today's meeting to a full board meeting. I will be brief because I know we have a fully packed agenda, and it really speaks to Cal-rite's continued growth and some of the words that President Aguinaldo previously mentioned in her remarks. As we begin the new fiscal year, I wanted to take a few minutes to highlight how Cal-rite continues to pioneer new ways to reach and serve adult learners across the state of California. In late July, we published our annual milestone report, which really illustrates the hard work and the dedication of our faculty, our students, and our staff. And it really tells the Cal-rite story of continued innovation that leads to continued adult learner success. We share our story of rapid growth and progress throughout the 2024-2025 academic year. And what it's really doing is demonstrating how a modern concept of higher education can serve adult learners in real time while also informing institutional effectiveness. And all of that in the context of a very shifting policy landscape, evolutions that we're experiencing increasingly dynamic in the labor market, and a growing affordability crisis that's confronting higher education. This past year was one of very strong growth in enrollments while also boosting student progress and completion. And so without burying the leader, giving too much away from our milestone report presentation today, during the 2024-2025 academic year, enrollment increased by 66%, certificates awarded grew by 122%. And most importantly, we continue to serve students in really every corner of the state, with Cal-rite learners representing 57 of 58 counties. The milestone report also touches on Cal-rite's continued achievements of every legislative requirement outlined in our founding legislation, including things like receiving accreditation a year and a half ahead of schedule. But I just want to point out that the report is actually more than just kind of these numbers on a page. It is really a narrative of progress, of innovation, and perhaps the most important thing, which has been life-changing success for our students. This milestone report, which is, as President Aguinaldo mentioned, the last one before our startup period ends, represents really the strong summit of our goals to enroll learners in skills-based programs to actually utilize their learner feedback and use it in service of building the college that actually works within their lives and partnering with statewide organizations to boost workforce development. And I think what's important to also note is we've garnered attention on these efforts, not just across California, but in conversations around the country with other innovative leaders who are like us, who are out there seeking solutions to the very vexing challenges that are facing the future of what is happening in higher education. So I encourage you to read the reports, or if you are short on time or cognitive bandwidth, skip to some of the sections that interest you the most because it really is an opportunity to also learn more about how Cal-rite brings and drives the significant value to the lives of working-age Californians. So to support us in our continued efforts on behalf of students, I'm also pleased to bring to the board the Cal-rite College's 2526 budget year for formal adoption. This is the final stage in a months-long collaborative process between the Cal-rite team and the Board of Trustees. And as we've previously discussed, this year's budget is challenging. The state budget is challenging. We're bearing witness and responding to really deteriorating economic conditions that are the effects of recent national policies, as well as new and compounding uncertainties that are deeply and disproportionately affecting California. We can already see this effect in public sector organizations, in agencies, in school districts, and nonprofits that continue to be impacted by these realities. And in light of the significant growth of our college experience in recent months and the growing demand that we're noticing for our skills-based flexible model, the budget for 2025-26 is truly focused on driving progress and completion for our current students. Cal-rite will continue to maximize state resources and to seek to leverage new resources that will allow us to continue to advance our work and our mission. And I'll let our CFO, Ed Lee, share more on the details of the budget, but I did want to underscore that no matter what our limitations are, Cal-rite is going to continue our mission to drive economic mobility and deliver for adult learners in a way that is equitable and, most importantly, in a way that's recognizing the unique ways they're experiencing the labor market, the education market, and continuing to design around their specific needs and roles. So I think you've probably heard me say, and I've noted previously, that in times like these, these moments of economic uncertainty that we face, people are seeking to upscale, which is what leads them to enroll in online flexible programs, just like what we provide at Cal-rite. So that is why our enrollment grew 66% in the last year without much effort on our part, frankly. As we plan for the future and we navigate that increased demand for our programs, it's important to note that we're also operating temporarily with a rolling admission system so that we can more tightly manage enrollment growth over the next year. And this will allow Cal-rite to narrow its focus on our current students, further boosting completion, creating ample opportunities for workforce development, and really focusing on the personalization of the student journeys for those in our walls. As you know, we have always been an open access institutions where students can enroll at any time. And so this is a momentary shift as we continue to ensure that we're providing quality, adult-learner-focused, skills-based education and really amplifying the supports that are necessary to meet their learners, our learners where they are. We have a very strong team in place navigating this shift, and I'm hopeful this will allow our college to really dig deeper into the success for current learners, but also preparing for the next round of prospective learners. So of course updating you again in the coming months as we move forward. Want to turn things back over to President Aguinaldo. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much, President Menon. Before we hop over to our closed session, which is Section 2, I wanted to give Trustee Correll the opportunity to greet the board at this, her first Board of Trustees meeting. So, Member Correll, welcome.
Thank you. I just, one, wanted to share my gratitude for having me on this board. And I am very excited for a lot of the reasons that were just sort of mentioned. I do believe a lot of my work is really focused on technology and innovation to really drive in communities and cities across the country. And there's nothing more integral to a lot of that than the upskilling and the training of workers to be able to really fill the innovative jobs of tomorrow. And so for me, the role of not just the community college systems, but a program like Cal-rite that really creates a model that can help any worker at all stages in life and education or every stage of their journey of learning, to be able to kind of really join that, join that upskilling, that innovative new workforce, I think is just really exciting. And I'm pleased to join you all in this journey. So thank you very much, and apologies for being a little bit late.
No apology necessary. Welcome, Member Correll. At this time, we'll move over to the closed session, and I have to read each of these descriptions verbatim, so please bear with me. Item 2.1 is a conference with labor negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representative Joseph Bremgartner, employee-unrepresented employee, president, and chief executive officer. Item 2.2 is conference with labor negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representative Joseph Bremgartner, employee-unrepresented employee, chief product officer. Item 2.3 is conference with labor negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representative Joseph Bremgartner, employee organization, Cal-rite Faculty Association. Item 2.4 is conference with labor negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representative Joseph Bremgartner, employee organization, California School Employees Association. Item 2.5 is public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957B, president and chief executive officer. Is there any public comment on these closed-session items?
President Aguinaldo, I see no public comment.
Thank you, Terry. We expect to return from closed session in approximately 1 hour and 50 minutes. See you then.
President Aguinaldo, we're ready.
Great, thank you very much. And Terry, if you could please let the record reflect that Trustee Costa is with us as well, I'd appreciate it. All right, team, there is no report out of closed session, so let's move on to Section 3 of the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? All right, hearing none. Any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Very much, Terry, and may have a motion, please.
Move approval, Haines.
A second?
Rawlings, second.
Thank you, Trustee Haines and Vice President Rawlings. Terry, if you could do the roll call, please.
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Lillian Correll.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis. Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
And Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. Team, let's move to the action agenda, Section 4. We're moving to item 4.1, the public hearing and adoption of the 2025-2026 final budget, including the president/CEO authorization for operational support services. Actually, we took that part out for this morning, so just the budget piece. So for just the first part, Part A, I'll pass that to our Chief Financial Officer, Ed Lee.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We're President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, Cal-rite President/CEO Menon, and members of the board. My name is Ed Lee, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer here at Cal-rite College. Today, I will be presenting the proposed 2025-2026 final budget. If we go to the next slide, please. Yeah, for today's time, I've included the agenda, which you can see here, which includes a high-level overview of some of the budget assumptions that will be, that are part of this budget, as well as some detailed information around the 2025-2026 final budget, and lastly, some next steps. Next slide, please. So let's go ahead and dive into the 2025-2026 budget assumptions. And some of these, you may recall, we did discuss at the July 1 meeting at the Executive, for the Executive Committee. So go ahead and go to the next slide there as well. Great, so let's talk about some headwinds and tailwinds for the college that we're seeing. First off, headwinds, you know, despite some strong advocacy efforts amidst this uncertain economic climate and a large projected state deficit, the final state budget unfortunately does not include additional funding for Cal-rite at this time. Secondly, with the change in the perspective on federal funding for higher education, federal funding opportunities have significantly decreased despite multiple efforts of Cal-rite. Third headwind we have here is, lastly, Cal-rite's one-time startup funds are projected to fully wind down during the 25-26 fiscal year. From a tailwind standpoint, Cal-rite continues to grow in enrollment. We shared earlier, 66% growth in enrollment last year and presence in 57 out of 58 counties throughout the state, which shows a continued need and demand for our programs. Secondly, the work of Cal-rite focuses on upskilling adult learners to fulfill high-needs jobs is well-aligned with state priorities. All right, let's go to the next slide. The tentative, sorry, the budget here, they're the same as the tentative budget, but the final budget assumptions here, they're aligned with the strategic vision framework. These priorities continue to be multi-fold, including serving both students and employers, driving institutional excellence, and amplifier innovative approach beyond the four walls, Cal-rite's virtual classrooms, make system level impact. Next slide, please. So there were effectively three major goals for this budget cycle, which were focused on three areas. First being continued program growth. Number two is building key strategic partnerships. And lastly, number three, managing its resources effectively. So first off, I'll share a couple of highlights on these. Cal-rite plans to launch two new programs in the upcoming 25-26 year, adding two additional programs, nature talent acquisition, as well as its community health worker program. Secondly, Cal-rite looks to continue to build its strategic partnerships. Key partnerships include those with SEIU, UHW, through the Innovative Community Health Worker Program, as well as collaboration with UC Irvine to bring data-backed behavioral science insights to support adult learners in a competency-based education model. Lastly, as Cal-rite continues to grow, it's working towards managing its resources effectively and efficiently to help manage its growth. Some examples of this include system-level work in student experiences, part of the student journey to D O, as well as through its internal operations, the launch of the SAP Concur Travel and Expense System to streamline business operations. Next slide, please. So in this slide, you can see the continued program growth. And with the new program offerings being bolded, sorry, there in bold face print, the nature talent acquisition and the green health worker program I mentioned. Let's go to the next slide there. So this slide represents the approved tentative budget from the July 1 Executive Committee. Couple highlights, just as a refresher. There was an assumption of 1.65 million in uncommitted revenue. There was an assumption of 45.2 million in expenditure size. And there is also an assumption in here for unrestricted reserve usage of close to $2 million to project a reserve balance of 5% by the end of June 2026.
I just have one clarifying, Chris.
Yes.
I'm not familiar with the terms Fund 11, Fund 12, Fund 10. What does that mean?
Yeah, sure. So Fund 11 is going to be, it is the annual apportionment that Cal-rite gets that is more in the unrestricted nature. So that'll be that first, I guess that second column, it's unrestricted fund sources, including, you know, other state funds or philanthropy, other things that might be sourced outside of the apportionment. So there's also like a grant number there, interesting, that's unrestricted in nature. And then Fund 12 would be more so the startup funds, the one-time startup funds, which actually are restricted in nature. And you can see that being a bigger number. And then Fund 10 is just the sum of those two together.
Send through that term.
Okay. Great, so I just, I wanted to, I want to spend more time on some of the final budget assumptions there. I'll have it to dive in. That is also, why don't we go to the next slide there, please? And then the next slide after that. So key final budget highlights include the following here. On the revenue and fund source side, you know, regarding the remaining one-time funds, again, we're projecting about 26.2 million remaining one-time funds by the end of June 2025. Again, that number is not exact, because we're still going through audit procedures, and that takes some time to get the exact audited number. Number two, it also includes 50 million in the annual funding, the apportionment, which would be, you know, the Fund 11, if you will, prior couple slides. Also want to note, we're also assuming approximately $1.7 million in unrestricted reserve usage, which is less than what we had in the tentative budget. And then the last one here, which is not a bullet point, but I want to note that we have, you know, taken out the assumption of 1.65 million in uncommitted revenue. It doesn't mean we're still not actively looking to grow the revenue, it just means we're taking out that assumption. So that's a bit on the revenue and fund source side. On the expenditure side, like to highlight, again, through a lot of effort and close review of existing resource allocation activities, we're able to identify the highest priority partnerships and external consultant support to reduce our projected spend in that category by roughly about 42% compared to the projected prior year. Secondly, in the supply services, other operating expenditure grouping there, again, projecting about a reduction in about 22% compared to the projected prior year. And on the staffing front, again, we have an assumption there about 172 full-time equivalents, primarily focused on program outcomes, student experience improvements, and technology tools. So the assumption, yes.
Obviously, all budgets are just sort of projected.
Obviously, all budgets are just sort of projections, and I appreciate, you know, the projections about expenditures and driving those down. In the absence of totally recognizing those savings, I assume we would have to dip into our reserve further, and in your estimation, you know, is, is that possible, that we have a healthy enough reserve? And then I would just, you know, my editorial comment, of course, is that scary, given everything that's going on? And we want to have a robust reserve to kind of guard against, you know, some of the headwinds.
Yeah, so, so regarding the reserve percentage, and I'll have it more in detail in a couple slides, but I will, I'll answer that quickly now, is projected reserve percentage of June of 2026 is going to be a little bit higher than the July 1, closer to 6%. Again, understand that's still not where the college, college wants to be, the chancellor's recommendation of 16.7%, but it'll give some level of buffer. Also, understanding that, you know, our, you know, department leads across the organization are well aware. Again, this is, these are kind of not to exceed budgetary assumptions. So again, the goal is to, to manage according to budget. So we're also implementing some more work, my team is, around giving our organization the proper tools and regular, accurate, and timely reports to ensure that we're managing against budget. So I think those are some new things. That's good to know, things that the organization, again, to what, the extent I'm aware of it, maybe had or had not been doing different ways, so. That's helpful.
Right, so I just want to add maybe a comment relative to that. So having served on those reels for 25 years, but, and, and those reels is fiscally conservative and has been all of my tenure, that the angst for me is looking at a 5% reserve. And so, and, and as a trustee, the question will then be, you know, we don't know what's in front of us. And so, are there other pots of money to pull from? Be it the one-time funds, be it other, other dollars, to up that 6% to something else as a cushion? And, and so, do you have an idea of what that would then be, out of? Would it be, are we, do we know that we can pull that out of the one-time funds, or is that restricted in some kind of way that we won't be able to?
No, sorry, and I would say, regarding the one-time funds, again, those are all allocated already. I would say.
I didn't hear that part. So sorry, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. And regarding additional kind of fund sources of, you know, there are some things we have not included in the assumptions, particularly around a couple of grants that we have applied for, and we are still waiting here back from, and we have that included though, but those are in progress. Additionally, there's ongoing philanthropic work that's happening, and it's hard to know that those are not included.
But I just want to interject.
No, please.
That grant funding would not be appropriate.
It wouldn't be appropriate for, for, for reserve, yeah.
Yeah, but it does allow for reallocation.
Right, it may allow.
We're adding to the cash on hand, so absolutely, like most of those are for dedicated activities and services. And, but we didn't want to assume a hold on the, on the philanthropic revenue or other external revenue that we didn't have direct contractual commitment around yet, and so, you know, I think we were conservative in the assumptions with the understanding that this needed to be tightly managed. And I will say, like, I, you know, I believe it to be a goal of ours, and I know of ads over the next few years to, to increase the, the level of reserve cushion. I know there's a lot of scrutiny in the system right now around the right and proper reserve levels, and we see some districts feeling like they want to have a stronger cushion for future times and things like that, and I think, and, you know, as we, as we sort of work to secure future resources, it's going to be important for us to, to set aside and consider building a strong and healthy reserve over time.
Thank you.
And also, it's helpful to know, I think there are some expenditure areas that are, are able to manage a bit throughout the year. So as far as the managerial management strategy I discussed earlier, it's just, you know, be it student prom books or other kind of expenditures that we can kind of review along the way, that's also part of the plan. You know, for the upcoming year. All right, next slide, please. Few more highlights related to the final budget. You know, personnel-related, as you shared earlier, it's, it's a more constrained resource environment. So there have been a few measures that we are assuming in the budget, and some we have enacted. First one being keeping the same salary schedule, right, so no salary calibrations, that have been kind of an historic activity. Secondly, we have enacted employee wage freezes specific to management and confidential employees, so there will be no step increases at this time for either employee group for 25-26. Additionally, for the management and confidential employee groups, there are furlough days. Again, those are actually kind of required days off, which actually do lead to savings for the organization. And those are one day per month, so 12 days throughout the year. The next one there is, you know, again, speaking of levers, right, is our adjunct faculty. You know, a lot of the work is kind of, you know, dictated by enrollment, the student needs there. And with the management enrollment for the upcoming year, we're able to manage the hours for some of the adjunct faculty. Again, depends on program. And as I referenced earlier, again, we're also continuing to engage with our bargaining units, staff on potential savings levers that are not included in the assumptions, which may continue to support, you know, exceeding the minimum, you know, organization policy reserve of 5%, again, closer to the chancellor's 16.7% of their recommendation. Next slide here. So this one, this one hopefully will be informative here, but wanted to share the major differences between the tentative budget, which was approved by the board, it is I can commit it on July 1, and then today's budget, we're sharing for you. I'd like to highlight the deltas, right, kind of that last column on the right. And the prior slide referenced some of those savings levers, right, that were primarily personnel-related in nature. You can take a look at this total expenditure line item there, and that's approximately 2 million. You see that negative 1.966 million? That is the impact of some of those decisions or assumptions. And you can see the, the negative numbers in the academic salaries, non-academic salaries, and employee benefits. There's some smaller deltas, which are in the other categories, which are really normal and a regular part of the calibration process, but most of those savings you can see are on those personnel-related items. That's one thing I want to note. And then the other thing I want to note here is on a total revenue line item, you can see, you know, the question being, wait, did revenues go down, right? So the assumption on revenues did, right, that's in reference to the 1.65 million in uncommitted kind of funding that we had assumed as part of the July 1. Again, this is a good thing for the college. We're able to, with the savings levers, as part of the final budget, we're able to act those out and not have a commitment to those within the budget. Doesn't mean the work isn't continuing, it just means that it's overall good news that there was not, we're not tracking against that particular budget. So in that effect, is the decrease in expenditure size is about 2 million, the decrease revenue size by 1.6 to 1.7 million, and the net kind of favorable of about 300,000.
Just a second, I think there's a little bit of feedback, it might be in LA.
Yes.
We're trying to fix that.
Okay.
I'll keep going for now. So the other thing I want to point out here is, you take a look at that bottom row, projected reserve percentage for the end of June of next year. The tentative budget did assume that minimum floor. Again, it's not where the college wants to be, it's just at 5%, and the final budget is higher than that by almost a percent, so close to 6% there. So overall, and some of the themes here are reduction in expenditure size, and based on those, those moves from, and assumptions from prior slide, also reduction in revenue side, and also continued use in reserves, to be clear. So that 317,000, you see that on that far right bottom corner there, that is kind of the net favorable move for the college from July 1 to today's proposed budget, which results in $300,000 less in, in projected reserve usage for the upcoming year based on today's proposed budget.
I have a question, and that's on the local revenues. What exactly are the local revenues, and why did it drop by so much?
Yeah, so that one, so for the July 1 tentative budget, again, there were certain assumptions related to particularly update philanthropy. We assumed a philanthropy portion around that size amount. So that helps, effectively, we're uncommitted revenue sources. All right, why don't we go to the next slide there? So this is the same format as the tentative budget.
Sorry, sorry, so just to clarify, it's not local revenue as in a local tax revenue base, but it's really just sort of non-state revenue?
Yeah.
For, yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, so let's talk, oh, let's go back to, sorry, the next slide there. Yes, great, thank you. So let's, let's take a look at kind of those two major fund sources, right? Same from the tentative budget slide is, take a look at Fund 11, again, those are the kind of unrestricted reserves, or sorry, reserves, but the fund source there, right? Primarily driven by the $15 million in annual portion that the college receives. And you can see that 15.15 million, 27,000 number in the state revenues, again, there's a little bit of a remaining state grant, that's why it's not a perfectly even number. On the local revenues also does include interest income, so the funds that the college has, those reserves are kept at the San Antonio County Office of Education there and the treasury. So that's why that number is not even, and so that interest income is spread out across Fund 11 being unrestricted, and Fund 12 being restricted, again, and associated with the one-time startup funds. So Fund 12 is one-time startup funds. Fund 11 is effectively everything else. So also want to highlight, you said, right, we're going to use up the, we're anticipating using up the remaining one-time startup funds, that's correct. So you take a look at, in the Fund 12 restricted column, kind of near the bottom there, there's that number, 26.15 to 541, about $26.2 million in projected one-time funds remaining. As of July 1, 2025, that number goes down to zero, right, in the cell below that, right, that's what represents the full usage of one-time funds. And then the reserve usage, where is that represented? That is represented by the Fund 11 unrestricted column, if you go all the way down, right, to the net projected beginning fund balance July 1, 2025, and we're projecting about 4.2 million in unrestricted reserves as of the end of the 24-25 year, that goes down to about 2.57 million, see that below, it's about 1.6, 1.7 million dollars in general unrestricted fund usage, which ends up being close to 6%, maybe a projected reserve percentage at the end of June 2026, which you can see in the lower right hand, in the lower right corner cell there. And with an organization expenditure size of about 43.2 million, which you can see all the way on the far right-hand side, at the total expenditure row line item there. All right, I think I got another slide, again, continue to field questions as well here. Next slide, please. So next steps. Continuing to engage with our labor partners to understand what key savings levers may be viable. And also continue to work on sustainable funding, and additional revenue opportunities, not only in the current year, 25-26, but also after that. And lastly, we're continuing to work on closing financial records for the 25-25 fiscal year, and submitting our year-end expenditures report to the chancellor's office, and working with our third-party auditors on our, just our annual regular audit activities. So I would say it's a busy season for, for team, the organization on this front. Those are all the slides I have for today. Happy to field any questions, further questions at the start.
It's ongoing, busy season for your team, so empathize with that. All right. I will now open the public hearing to receive comments from members of the public.
Sorry, can you introduce them?
Yeah. Hildy, we had a, we had a raised hand on this end, I don't know if you can see.
I cannot see.
It's Amy Costa, of course, I want to talk on the budget.
Okay.
You could have guessed that one.
There, there is a section at the end of the public hearing for trustee discussion. So we took some questions during the item, I think we went a little bit out of order, but if it's okay with you, trustee Costa, let's do the public hearing first and then do the, do your question.
Whatever you'd like.
Okay, great. Any members of the public wishing to speak?
President Aguinaldo, we have one anonymous comment, which I will read.
Okay.
As a Calver employee, I think the board and staff for removing action item 4.1B authorized in the president to incur expenses over 100,000. Calver is already in a difficult financial state under leadership that did not appropriately plan for this fiscal year. It would make no sense to reduce oversight and give greater freedom to spend significant sums without board review. We already see that oversight is vital. Calver just began a contract with the Academic Leadership Group for reorganization consulting. Phase one, just under 100,000, was able to move forward with no board approval needed. Phase two is projected at over 140,000, for a potential total of over 230,000. Under that proposal, contracts of this scale.
Teri, I think I'm going to interrupt you on that one, because that, that comment looks like it's on 4.1B, which we took off the agenda. So we are no longer taking public comment on 4.1B, but if there's anything on 4.1A, we'd be happy to take that now.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Oh, quite all right.
I do not see any public comment.
Hey, excellent. Seeing no additional requests to speak from members of the public, I will now close the public hearing and bring the discussion, bring the item to the board for discussion. So I'll take trustee discussion, and I think member Costa has her hand raised.
Yeah, mine's really just a comment, which is, as a relatively new entity that receives states' support, this is part of the deal, which is the boost and boom that is the California. And so even though I know as an organization, this is probably painful, it is part of our maturation as an entity. And I think, you know, based on everything that's happened in HR1 and the federal government, that's the reality that we find ourselves in with a lot of other entities in California. And so I want to just thank the staff for bringing this forward, because we know that these are tough. It's really easy when, you know, like, we have funding. This is a lot tougher. And so I just appreciate the work and the thoroughness of the presentation, and, you know, I'd be lying if I said we won't be here again at some point in the future, we may be. And so it's good for us to flex this muscle on, as we navigate through financial uncertainty, which is certain to happen again in the history of our, of our college. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Costa. Any other member, any other comments from the board? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I know that we adopt the 2025-26 final budget.
Right, I heard Rawlings.
I'll second, Costa.
Oh, okay. Rawlings and Costa.
Hey.
I'll save you. We'll save you, Member Perry, for the next one. Terry, if I could take a roll call.
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Adrian Brown.
Hi.
Lilian Corral.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Hi.
Tom Epstein. Pam Hanes.
Hi.
Harry LeGrand. Harry LeGrand.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
And Siri and Villa Vicencio.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. All right, let's move on to item four point two, approval of changes to executive employment contracts of the president and CEO and chief product officer. And for that, I'll pass it to our VP of Human Resources, Joseph Brumgartner.
Good afternoon, President Aguinaldo, I am not the VP of Human Resources, but I will be presenting this. Item on his behalf. Today's staff is seeking your approval to temporarily modify the employment contracts for the president. For President Jida Menon and our chief product officer, Vivek Vivas. Vias, in connection with the ongoing review and recommendation for cost-saving measures in anticipation. Funding challenge. All right, implemented step freezes. Of furlough days for management and confidential employees effective July first, twenty twenty five. Discussions with representative groups regarding participation in cost-saving measures are ongoing. The president and CEO and chief product officer are employed pursuant to. President. Product officer.
Yeah, anyways. Yeah, I think that.
I'm sorry, it's going off.
Okay.
Should I start over, the, in connection with the ongoing review. And recommendation for cost-saving measures in anticipation of upcoming funding challenges. Calbright implemented step freezes and twelve furlough days for management and confidential employees effective July first, twenty twenty five. Discussions with representative groups regarding participation in cost-saving measures are ongoing. The president and CEO and chief product officers are employed. Pursuant to, I'm sorry, CPO is employed, are employed pursuant to written contracts which require board approval. To modify the terms, the president and CEO and chief product officer. Have agreed to participate in the cost-saving measures by waiving specified financial. Incentives along with a temporary reduction in workdays and corresponding reduction in salary for the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six fiscal year. Both contracts currently include yearly incentives. Which both individuals are asking to waive, as well as a temporary reduction in workdays and corresponding pay. To match the twelve furlough days implemented for other management and unrepresented employees. Pursuant to paragraph three A of the president's employment contract, a retention increase in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Is to be added to her base salary effective August first, twenty twenty five. The president is agreeing to waive this retention increase and remain at her current salary. Therefore, we are asking that you approve the president's waiver of the retention increase of twenty thousand dollars. Specified in paragraph three A of the employment agreement for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal. Pursuant to paragraphs three and ten of the chief product officer's employment contract. An annual performance, performance incentive of ten thousand dollars is to be added to his base salary effective. For the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year. The chief product officer is agreeing to waive this annual. Performance incentive and remain at his current salary. And accordingly, we ask that you approve. The chief product officer's waiver of the annual performance incentive of ten thousand dollars specified. In his employment contract for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year. And finally, we ask that you approve a temporary reduction in workdays, along with the corresponding pay equivalent for twelve days for both the president and CEO. And chief product officer, which both have agreed to as well. Those that will conclude my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Wanda, any trustee discussion?
I have a question.
Uh trustee Epstein.
First of all, I want to. And the CEO and chief product officer. Making this sacrifice. Shows a real commitment to the organization. I have a question, though, the chief product officer contract that was attached to the agenda. Indicates it ends on October ninth, twenty twenty five. So is that true? What's, what is the future of the chief's?
That is correct, the.
Somebody answer the contract.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I can't see the, the screen that well, yes, the, the chief product officer's contract is slated to end in October. Efforts are in the way to transition his employment into an appointed. Term base in line with the rest of the management group, and that will occur and be brought to you in the near future for approval.
Yeah, just a, just a, and just a quick historical addition on this. In the, in the beginning days of the college, there was like a few employment contracts. That were not a part of the regular management salary schedule, and so we've been phasing that out over time. So the, the primary responsibility of the board around. Things that are outside of the management schedule. Is just the president's CEO contract, which the board annually directly reviews.
Any other trustee comments? King Nan, any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Aguinaldo.
Very much, Terry, I'll entertain a motion, but I'll give the first right of refusal to Member Perry.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Member Perry, may have a second, please.
Haynes seconds.
Thank you, Haynes, and Terry may have a roll call, please.
Heldegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Adrian Brown.
Hi.
Lilian Corral.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Hi.
Tom Epstein. Pam Hanes.
Hi.
Harry LeGrand.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Siri and Villa Vicencio.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. We are now moving to section five of our agenda, information and reports. Let's go to item five point one, overview of Calbright College's twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five milestone report. And for that, I'll pass it to our Vice President of Marketing Communications and Outreach, Mackenzie Smith.
Thank you, President Aguinaldo, and then good afternoon to you all and to members of the Cal, Calbright College Board of Trustees. I'm going to pause for just one second until we have the slide deck up here. Thank you. I am Mackenzie Smith, Vice President of Marketing Communications and Outreach, and today I have the honor of presenting on Calbright's annual milestone report. As many of you know, every year on July thirty first. Calbright produces a report that provides a comprehensive overview of the college's progress and achievements during the previous fiscal year. Mandated by our founding legislation, this report underscores Calbright's commitment to the success of California's adult learners. And contributions to the state's workforce development goals. As President Menon mentioned earlier today, we've had an enormous amount of growth and success this year. And as we review some of the key highlights of the report today, I'd encourage you to reflect on the growth and understand. At the end of our startup period, it's just the beginning for more effective, efficient, and innovative education and workforce opportunities. For California's working age adults. Throughout the report, you will find a plethora of student stories from the stay-at-home dad trying to get back into the workforce. To the worker with a diverse resume to advance her career, next slide, please. Take Deb, for example, a data analysis student and Calbright's student body president. Throughout her career, Deb has been a nursing assistant, a traveling singer, and a merchandiser. Our skills-based flexible model has helped her navigate data at her current job. Provided her with micro internship experience and further developed her leadership skills, next slide, please. Deb's story truly speaks to Calbright's mission, which is stated in the report as always, and I felt it important to center us around it for this presentation. Calbright College is committed to increasing economic mobility and closing equity gaps for working adults who lack easy access to traditional forms of higher education. The college offers online, flexible, and affordable skills-based programs. That provide tangible economic value for both working adults and hiring managers. Next slide. And in order to achieve this mission, we are laser focused, focused on three main strategic priorities. Per our twenty twenty four to twenty twenty seven strategic vision. They are to serve students and employers to drive institutional excellence within our college. And amplify our innovative approach across the higher education system and beyond, next slide, please. In addition to inspiring student stories, the report highlights that Calbright has achieved all of our mandated milestones. Again, these are mandates outlined in our founding legislation, next slide. First, we received accreditation, while achieving this milestone isn't new, it's still very worthy of celebrating. And work is well underway towards our accreditation renewal and further underscoring the quality programs and services that we offer to adult learners, next slide. Second, and arguably most important, we continue to enroll students. What may seem as an obvious mandate from the legislature is critically important to reimagining higher education. Just this year, as President Menon mentioned, we've grown enrollment by sixty six percent. This is a huge indicator that amidst an economic uncertainty, people are flocking to skills training so they can compete in today's job market. And as President Menon mentioned earlier, our new enrollment management strategy will help Calbright navigate this momentum. And focus our efforts on persistence and completion for our current student body, next slide. Last but not least, we continue to incorporate student feedback in the Calbright way with data-driven solutions. Whether it's through the annual student experience survey or our behavioral design sprints with Ideas forty two and UC Irvine. We continue to maintain a student-centered institution. As you will see in the report, our research and development team was able to triple twenty twenty four student experience survey responses from the previous year. Given their equitable co-design of the survey with our actual students, next slide, please. Our student-centered focus is truly how we are built different as an institution. In addition to our online, skills-based, flexible model, we consider the many types of support and unique ways it takes. For working age Californians to feel successful and empowered in their education and job skills training, next slide, please. And don't just take it from me, take it from Emma, a student in multiple Calbright programs who credits our faculty and counselors for truly caring. And helping her rethink her career. Calbright's faculty have credible academic and professional expertise in the industries that our students are preparing to enter. And the faculty members constantly provide support and guidance from the curriculum and technology to networking and preparing for interviews, next slide. You can also take it from Ahmed, the first Calbright student to complete all three technology programs. Ahmed highlights the ability of our faculty to reach out to students and support their flexible journey. Next slide, please. And finally, you can take it like from someone like our very own Antoinette McGee, a student success counselor who connects with students daily. Antoinette says, our students are at the forefront of every decision we make. And we're not just looking at what we can learn from data to best support our students. But at what we hear directly from each student and what they need to achieve their goals. Next slide, please. A section of the report is dedicated to our student supports. From delivering responsive counseling services to evaluating basic needs and securities. And developing a portal specific to our offerings, while also redesigning the student experience. Which is internally named the Student Journey two point O. To meet our students where they are, while also integrating the supports to guide their success. CRM and data analysis student Leonard illustrates that Calbright has done a stellar job in catering to the needs and goals of adult learners. He says that he tried going back to a traditional college and realized, maybe it's just not right for me. As soon as I started at Calbright, I realized that this is a pretty cool virtual campus. Definitely geared towards people studying online, and that he also found a community. Next slide. To continue the drumbeat of our student supports, I'd love to highlight our research partnership with UC Irvine School of Education. And Behavioral Design nonprofit Ideas forty two. This partnership leverages behavioral design science insights, data science techniques, and proactive student support methods to help more Calbright students. Complete their programs, next slide. As we continue our research partnership, this year, the Calbright team sought to dig deeper into better understanding the needs of our students. The Public Policy Institute of California noted in a May twenty twenty five report that one point eight million California households struggle to afford food. And while four in five Californians were enrolled in CalFresh in twenty twenty two. The state's participation remains lower than the national average. Recognizing that a significant number of eligible Calbright students do not access state benefits. Our initiative focused on identifying the behavioral barriers that get in the way. And also designing the solutions to help overcome them. This effort is rooted in a key insight that students frequently under-report their basic needs. Making it harder to connect them to resources, even when that support is readily available. Early pilots of this work have shown that small changes in how Calbright asks about a student's needs. Led to over twice as many students identifying and expressing insecurities that they're facing. You'll also see that our data from the pace and progress timelines, which were instilled about. Two years ago to offer learners a little bit more structure to the flexible programs, still stands and continues to boost persistence and completion. Next slide. The report also weaves in Calbright's expanded work-based learning initiatives, which are advancing success and workforce outcomes for our students beyond the virtual classroom, next slide. From initiatives like the California Workforce Accelerator to the New Calbright Career Bridge, which is a pilot with our partners at Reipen. To provide seventy five Calbright students with flexible paid project-based micro internships. Calbright's commitment to work-based learning is illustrative of our mission to drive economic mobility for adult learners in every corner of the state, next slide. As you'll see from our partners at Reipen, they echo that sentiment, citing that it's not only about enabling learners to have the hands-on experience. It's supplying them with durable skills that helps both the students and employers alike, next slide. It's challenging to capture one year of student success, innovative efforts on behalf of our learners, and key milestones reached in one presentation. And while this may be a board informational item, it wouldn't be a true marketing president or presentation without a call to action. With that, I'd love for you all to take a look through our twenty twenty five milestone report. Commit some student success stories to memory and utilize those stories to bring to life the need for and the value of a Calbright certificate in your next conversation. And if you feel so inclined, we would love for you to share one of those successes on LinkedIn. You'll see a QR code here on the report and on the presentation. Which leads to the report, and it's also listed on our website and within the board agenda. If there is one thing that you walk away with today, I hope it is that Calbright continues to redefine education for working age adults. And as we near the end of our startup period, we are proud of our achievements and look forward to continuing to break down barriers. So that our learners can participate in today's workforce. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mackenzie, any trustee discussion? Can't see anything going on in Sacramento because the camera is facing the dais, but if there are any trustees with questions, please speak up.
I don't have a question.
Number Haynes?
Thank you. I just, I don't have, I don't really have a question, but I really do. From where we started to where we are today, and where our students are today is. In no short order. Just very impressive. I think that Calbright and the staff, faculty. And the, the management team have worked in, in collaboration on behalf of our students and in such a way. As to benefit, not, not, not just the institution, but the students that they serve and the families throughout California. That's where the rubber hits the road. We are moving in the right direction relative to skill-based learning, we are a model that is national. And in no small part to all the folks who. who just did gone the extra mile. And so this is just a sample of what we've done, and I look forward to what we're about to do.
Thank you, Member Haynes. I feel that the report is truly a testament to our staff, our faculty, our students, and all of the hard work. So a very public thank you to the CalBright team as well for all of the great work.
I echo Pam's comment that it's a beautiful report. Trustee Correll.
No, I was just gonna say the same. I really echo the comments shared. I am, this is my first meeting, so I am walking into what feels like just a really wonderful story of growth in this startup period, in this first period, and just so much potential moving forward. And so congratulations to you all on that.
This is Harry. I have my hand up, and I'm not certain if you can see it. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, and you can speak.
I just wanted to also say how proud I am to be a part of the Board of Trustees for CalBright. I want to thank the faculty, the staff, and the students who have kind of joined this adventure with us. I think it really is a bright shining star for California. I think if anything, that can really continue to impact the economic engine of the state, CalBright is that bright future with our ability to be nimble and flexible. I mean, the fact that we got our full accreditation a year and a half early is no small feat. A lot of universities go, have to go a lot longer to make that happen. And I think it just speaks to the commitment and dedication of the team working around there. So thank you for the report. And I think, again, want to thank the faculty and the staff and the students who've embarked on this journey with us.
Trustee LaGrand, we have trustee Villa-Vincencio.
Oh, thank you, President. I just want to echo all of my other colleagues to thank, again, CalBright staff for putting this wonderful report together as the only, believe I'm the only member now who represents the Central Valley. And so I am really grateful that the report centers not just the student voices, but on page 16 and 17, the region. And I see, obviously, that CalBright serves 57 and 58 counties. I'd love to see in future reports perhaps where those students are located, particularly in our underserved regions of the state, including the Central Valley, the Inland Empire. I can't take credit for this comment, but remember Epstein and I were having a conversation since I'm also a faculty representative on the board. I'd love, again, the testimonies for students. I didn't see a member of a CalBright faculty member. I think it would be wonderful to see and have their testimony as well as the wonderful work that they do to help and support our students. We know we have outstanding faculty, not just in CalBright, but across our system. And so I also wanted to highlight the number of male students and the percentages there. I know demographically, we have more female students that we serve and institutions generally in our system, but to see CalBright focusing on our sort of almost half and half shows that there are specifically targeting our male students and obviously our students of color. And so I'd love to see that demographic to sort of reflect the general population of California. And as we strive to identify those 6.8 million Californians without a post-secondary education, I think CalBright is moving in the right direction. So I commend this report. It's wonderful to see. And again, kudos to the CalBright staff and President, your team. Thank you.
Member Brim.
Echoing all the sentiments, the work of CalBright is truly remarkable. I have one question, and it's about the counties. It's really impressive that we've really expanded out, and now there's only one county left. So I'm just curious to know what county that we're going to be getting very soon.
I can guess it. Mackenzie knows it, but.
Yes, if anyone would like to guess, feel free, but I'm happy to provide that. It is Alpine County. So if anyone knows anyone in Alpine County, please, please give them our number and tell them to come on over.
I guessed right.
Yeah. Starting a trustee field trip here, a little road trip to Alpine. Any other trustee comments? All right, any public comments?
There is no public comment.
Harry, thank you again to Mackenzie for just a wonderful report and to the entire team, because even though it's Mackenzie's report, the entire team put their work and their heart into this, and we can't be more proud of what we've accomplished in the past several years. So thank you very much for all of that. I will pass, I will move on to item 5.2, Reports on Contracts and Purchases. So we will bring Ed back up to the dais for that.
And again, I'm here to provide the standard report of monthly contract and purchasing activity for the organization. In this round, we are including June as well as July, just given the timing of the last meeting on July 1st. So you'll see in the materials, contract reports for June, which includes nine contracts, and July, which includes 14 contracts. These agreements encompass a variety of necessary programmatic and operational work. And I do want to note a typo in the work per date for the temporary technology support should be July 25th, 2023, not 2025. So those are the contracts. The purchase reports, you can find as well for June, July. For June, there's a purchase list total of 37,000, 1.1 million for July. I will note that the July purchasing report includes an expenditure greater than $100,000 with CDWG as a line with the approved budget. However, based on the agenda adjustment today, we plan to revisit this item at an upcoming executive meeting for clarification. Happy to take any questions on this one.
Any questions or comments from our trustees? All right. Trustee Costa, was that a hand or no?
No.
Scratching her ear, and I thought it was her raising her hand. Any public comments? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Terry.
I'm sorry. We're having little technical issues here. There's no public comment.
All righty then. Let's move to Section 6, which is our constituency group reports. The first one is Item 6.1, the CalBright Academic Senate Report from Michael Stewart.
Good afternoon, President Aguinaldo and Vice President Rawlings and CalBright's Board of Trustees. I'm Michael Stewart, your Academic Senate President. As we're in full swing of the new academic year, it's important to take a moment to recognize our faculty's outstanding accomplishments in instruction, student support, and institutional leadership. From creating and delivering impactful workshops that reached hundreds of students to launching innovative new courses and expanding our own cybersecurity tracks, our faculty has significantly broadened learning opportunities aligned with real-world workforce demands. We've integrated 24/7 AI-based support agents, developed durable skill frameworks, and authored open educational resources that promote equity and access throughout the system. Additionally, faculty have played key roles in our accreditation efforts and program development initiatives, showing a strong commitment to student success, collaboration, and ongoing improvement. These achievements showcase dedication, creativity, and teamwork that define our work as educators and student advocates. They stand as a testament to our faculty's collective effort not only to serve our students' current needs, but also to anticipate and shape the future of equitable, high-quality education. Building on this strong foundation, we will continue to elevate our efforts in the coming year, expanding access through inclusive course design and open education resources, increasing student engagement with dynamic real-world content, and always-on-demand support. Through ongoing innovation and collaboration, we're poised to improve student success, empower our colleagues, and advance CalBright's mission of equitable, transformative learning for all Californians. And also, I did hear that some of the Board of Trustees would maybe like to speak to faculty about how we do it at CalBright, or maybe take a look under the hood. So I will leave my personal cell phone number in the chat. You can get ahold of us, and we would be more than happy to show you how we do it at CalBright.
Michael, what about if you leave your personal cellphone with Terry? And she could distribute it to us.
Gonna put it out there to everybody.
You're more than welcome to leave it with Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Michael. Right, Item 6.2, CalBright Faculty Association Report, and that one is from Cindy Carney.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and other members of the board. On behalf of the CalBright Faculty Union, we appreciate the opportunity to engage in this important dialogue during a time of significant financial challenge. We recognize the financial pressures facing the college and remain committed to CalBright's mission and student success. However, we are concerned that proposed budget measures such as furlough, salary freezes, and rising healthcare costs may unintentionally undermine student outcome and faculty well-being. Faculty working conditions directly impact student learning, particularly in an online environment where access to culturally responsive teaching and support is critical. Research has distinctly shows that cuts to institutional staff reduce student engagement, retention, and success with the greatest impact on underserved communities. Many faculty are already experiencing a decline in real income due to inflation, increased premiums, and a lack of cost-of-living adjustment, leaving some struggling to meet basic needs in high-cost regions of California. While we support shared responsibility, we respectfully ask the board to ensure that any reductions align with CalBright's mission and values. We urge a thoughtful, transparent approach that prioritizes instructional and student-facing roles, including shared governance in reviewing administrative and non-instructional spending, and seeks equitable solutions that protect the core of our educational promise. Faculty remain ready to collaborate on fiscally responsible strategies that do not compromise student success or institutional integrity. Thank you very much. On behalf of the CFA, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy. Item 6.3 is from the California School Employees Association and Donna Howard.
Thank you. Good afternoon, CalBright College Board of Trustees. On behalf of the California Schools Employees Association Bargaining Unit at CalBright College, we are honored to present this brief report reflecting the dedication of classified professionals who advance the mission of CalBright College every day. CalBright's mission to increase economic mobility for adult learners through flexible, accessible, and skills-based education is one we take to heart. As classified staff, we are proud to support this mission by ensuring our systems run smoothly, our students are supported, and our programs are delivered effectively. Whether through direct student services, technical support, operations, or administrative functions, our members are part of the foundation of CalBright's daily work. This item provides an update from CSEA related to membership and unit leadership. As of June 30th, 2024, CalBright had 37 CSEA members. As of today, CalBright has 69 CSEA members. That means we currently have 83.9% membership of classified staff. We consistently have at least 70% of our membership attend our monthly meetings. Our members are highly skilled professionals who take pride in their active involvement in the union. Other highlights from our chapter during the 2025 year include the welcome addition of the following classified members taking on leadership roles in addition to our executive board. Maria Reynoso has come forward as chief steward, and a second chapter steward, Mike Palmieri, is also our chapter vice president. We added two site representatives, Crystal Maldinaldo and Marissa Jimenez, and a communications director, Juana Munoz. In summary, during the 23-24 year, the leadership of CSEA consisted of four individuals. We are pleased to announce our leadership team has now expanded to nine members in various roles. We take pride in our engaged membership, and we are excited about the future ahead. In June, we encourage you to evaluate the structural composition of CalBright and to provide input on developing a sustainability framework as opposed to the growth-focused structure that has been in place. We are still awaiting your feedback. CSEA remains deeply committed to collaborating with college leadership to ensure that the voices of classified staff are represented and valued in all decision-making processes. We have not lost hope for CalBright and urge you to dedicate the necessary time to recognize the importance of transitioning the college from a growth phase to one of sustainability. For instance, our research has indicated that additional cuts can be made to the category of other operating expenses and services without negatively impacting services to our student population. We ask you to please remember that the legacy of the Board of Trustees is directly tied to the success of CalBright College. We look forward to working together to strengthen our student-centered institution and appreciate your continued support for classified professionals.
Thank you very much, Donna. Item 6.4 is a report from the Associated Students of CalBright College, and for that, Deb Hemingway.
As always, thank you so much for that wonderful introduction. I am Deb Hemingway. I am your 2025 ASCC president, and I'm also a CalBright success story. I thank each and every one of you for the opportunities that I've been given at CalBright College. Thank you so much. Reading on to the constituency report. As we embark on the second term, I am proud to share several highlights that reflect our progress, collaboration, and commitment to student leadership and engagement. The Bright Star Awards. This term began on a high note with the Bright Star Awards, where we celebrated the dedication, achievements, and resilience of our students and employees. The event not only served as a recognition of hard work, but also as an inspiration to continue advocating for student success and equity. New officers and fresh perspectives. With the start of this term, we welcomed a majority of new officers to our team. Their energy, fresh ideas, and eagerness to serve have already brought a renewed sense of purpose and momentum. We are working together to ensure a smooth transition and to build on the foundation laid by the previous teams and terms leadership. Strengthening our relationship with SSCCC. We have taken meaningful steps to strengthen our relationship with the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, also known as SSCCC. Increased communication and collaboration with SSCCC representatives have positioned us to align more closely with statewide initiatives, share best practices, and amplify our student voices at the regional and state level. Juneteenth Celebration. We were honored to participate in our campus's first Juneteenth Celebration. This historic and culturally significant event created a powerful opportunity to engage with our community, uplift Black voices, and continue important conversations around racial equity and social justice. And also, last but not least, our monthly meetings with President Menon have proven invaluable in ensuring transparency, mutual understanding, and proactive problem solving, solving, excuse me. These sessions allow us to bring forward student concerns, discuss ongoing projects, and collaboratively explore new initiatives to enhance student life and academic success. And as we move forward, our focus remains on inclusive leadership, student empowerment, and continued partner student empowerment, and continued partnership across all levels in our campus and beyond. And I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Deb. Item 7.1 is our public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
President Aguinaldo, I have an anonymous statement. As a CalBright employee, I thank the board and staff for removing action item 4.1B, authorizing the president to incur expenses over $100,000. CalBright is already in a difficult financial state under a leadership that did not appropriately plan for this fiscal year. It would make no sense to reduce oversight and give greater freedom to spend significant sums without board review. We already see that oversight is vital. CalBright just began a contract with the Academic Leadership Group for Reorganization Consulting. Phase one, just under $100,000, was able to move forward with no board approval needed. Phase two is projected at over $140,000 for a potential total of over $230,000. Under that proposal, contracts of this scale could have proceeded with minimal board input. With CalBright's stability in mind, as employees are being asked to sacrifice with furloughs and foregoing earned raises just to increase the reserve fund, 4.1B would have limited transparency and accountability in spending, which are more important than ever. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Terry. Was that our only comment?
Yes, President Aguinaldo.
Great. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to thank Laura and Terry and everyone working behind the scenes to make sure that this meeting is a success. I know the fact that we are in two different locations gives rise to a lot of technological complications, and we work through that every second to make sure we can hear each other and see each other and engage with, with everyone involved in this meeting. So thank you both, and thank you to all the teams working behind the scenes. So with that, I will adjourn us. The time is 2:27, and the business of the Board of Trustees has concluded. Thanks, everyone, and take care.